Hello, I'm Michael Popa, Executive Director of Mainstream Coalition, and thank you for joining this candidate forum, co-presented by the League of Women Voters of Johnson County, Mainstream Coalition, Advocacy and Awareness Group of Johnson County, Climate Action KC, Mid-America LGBT Chamber, and the Northeast Johnson County Chamber of Commerce. Tonight, we'll hear from three candidates running for the Shawnee Mission School District Board of Education. Please note that all candidates on the November 2 ballot were invited to participate. Tonight, we're offering closed caption through a third-party service. If you don't see that, click the CC button at the bottom of your screen and then choose "Show Captions." You may have to swipe over if you're on a mobile. And if time permits, at the end of the forum, we will be taking your questions. Please submit those using the Q&amp;A feature, also located on the bottom of your Zoom screen or with a swipe. A link to the full-form guidelines will be placed in the chat, but I'd like to go over just a few items. Candidates will be given two minutes and the opportunity to answer every question. We'll be tracking that time in chat. So we're going to give a one minute, 30 seconds, a 10 seconds, and then a time. At time, our moderator will politely thank the candidate and then move on to the next candidate should they continue speaking. As we all know, odd-year elections often go unnoticed and voter turnout can be as low as 10%. But this is a critical election year, especially for our local school boards. Outside money has been pouring into Kansas from extremist special interest groups and federal PACs targeting our local school board races. The partner organizations cosponsoring this forum believe that democracy works when citizens are informed and active. And we hope that this forum provides you with an opportunity to make an informed decision with filling out your ballot. So thank you for joining us this evening. And now, I'd like to welcome our moderator, David Johnson, co-chair of the Public Policy Committee for that Mid-America LGBT Chamber of Commerce.
Thanks, Michael. Glad to be joining everyone this evening, and thank you, candidates, for making the time. We'll jump right in with the first question for April Boyd-Narona. What are your top goals and priorities?
Thank you, David, and I'd like to thank all the organizations that are hosting the event tonight. My top priorities for my candidacy for the school board is to continue, help continue, the academic excellence that is already represented within our various schools throughout the district, to further champion the community engagement from stakeholders both inside and outside of the district, and for those that incorporate emerging trends within the classrooms and want to be partners with us with that endeavor. Also with workforce development. As a college professor, I teach cybersecurity, which is one of those emerging trends, and I'm also an advocate for STEM careers, especially for girls and women. So making sure that with the workforce development, we are equipping and encouraging all students to have a foundation of emerging trends in science, technology, engineering, and math. And then for those that want to pursue it, for them to also have that opportunity as well. I want to also be a champion for diversity, equity, and inclusion in the school district. We've gotten off to a great start, and I hope as a candidate and potential member of the school board to be able to further champion that as a part of our strategic goals for the district. Thank you.
Thank you. Next question or next candidate would be Heather Ausley. Thank you for...
Thank you for having me tonight. I'm Heather Ausley. I'm the current board president and a longtime public education advocate for our community. My primary goals as we move forward, should I be fortunate enough to win a second term, would be to continue to reach for the goals outlined in the community's strategic plan, working to close the achievement gap that we have in our district and making sure our students are college and career-ready, supporting the real-world learning plan that we have for students so that they can have real-world experiences, and to get us through COVID successfully while finishing the job of reducing secondary workload from six to five out of seven. So that's a lot. And I think that we are on track to do all of those things, to get through COVID, to come out the other side stronger than we were before. And I look forward to having the opportunity to get us there.
Thank you. Same question to Mary Sinclair. Top goals and priorities?
Hi, I'm Mary Sinclair, and I currently serve as the Vice President for the Shawnee Mission School Board. I'm alumni of Shawnee Mission East, and my kids are Lancer grads, as well as several of my siblings and niece and nephew. In terms of priorities for the district, it's really linked into my reason for running for reelection, and that is to continue support for the pivotal work of the strategic plan. And I think I'll just add on to where Heather Ausley and April Boyd-Narona both kind of identified some of those key components of the strategic plan. Other examples include work towards creating those opportunities for every kid to be college and career-ready. So along that path, we have a recent addition of high school counselors that will focus on those secondary goals to help kids be aware and take advantage of those district real-world learning opportunities. We have, I think, about 20% of our kids who graduated last year left with dual college credit. And that would be something that every student, if they choose to, would like to take advantage of. You can graduate with almost a full year of college credit. The potential is there. We had about 30% of our kids participating in client-based projects. The district also hired a part-time business to education coordinator and participation with the Shawnee Mission Education Foundation. And that coordinator then has the capacity to build those connections between school and the business and industry partners that create those opportunities for client-based projects. So along, you know, there's other examples at the elementary level that are critical to the strategic plan, notably the changes in the elementary grade card. We can talk more about that later. Thanks.
All right, thank you. Next question, and we'll start with Heather Ausley. With the ongoing COVID-19 pandemic and the emergence of the Delta variant causing another wave in cases, what do you see the school board's responsibility is in ensuring the health of all students and staff while also prioritizing the education of children?
So that's something that we have grappled with over the course of the last year and a half. And one of the frustrations of being board president during a global pandemic is that there were multiple layers of government prior to reaching the school board for those decisions. And consistently, those decisions got pushed down to the lowest level. We like to talk about local control. I think local control is where a lot of the best decisions are made for communities because we know what our own communities need the most. But it was frustrating to see the Federal Department of Education and then the state legislature and the State Department of Health predominantly put the responsibility for making tough choices with each individual board. I think that we have an obligation to make sure that our children are still receiving the best education that they can. Shawnee Mission has a tradition of excellence. And in 2020, in March, that looked like learning from home because we needed to get kids safe. And then last year, we provided families with the opportunity to learn online or to be in-person when infection rates were low enough to allow us to do so safely with risk mitigation. Unfortunately, the Kansas Legislature took the ability to make that choice away. Again, we like to have control at the local level and, of course, to have layers of government providing protection. It's frustrating when a layer of government removes an opportunity that was working well. But moving forward, risk mitigation appears to be working. Masks are working. Getting additional shots in arms to kids, we want to promote that at every opportunity. But as long as we are able to provide safe in-seat learning, we are going to do so. It's just hard to know what variant brings what next.
Thank you. Same question to Mary. Mary, on mute.
Can you restate the question?
Sure. With the ongoing pandemic and emergence of the Delta variant, what do you see as the board's responsibility in ensuring the health of all students while prioritizing their education?
So the district took an approach that was very collaborative with the Johnson County Department of Health and Environment, along with the area superintendent. So there was a very intensive, persistent effort to collaborate in partnership to identify what the most effective practices would be to keep kids engaged in school, community, keep our students and staff safe while they still remained engaged in learning. I'm trying to think about where do I sit, you know, just to the left of Heather at the chair. And we've debated a lot of these issues in trying to determine what's going to be best to keep our students safe and engaged in learning and our staff safe. In adding to that, I think we are proud to be able to have kids back in school. That was a big step towards the end of last year and being able to reopen schools this year with full in-person learning really has been a function of that layered mitigation protocol. So not only masks and vaccines, which are two of the leading protective factors, but continuing with social distancing, continuing with all the hygiene and cleaning, the air filtration. So all those components are still critical. And to the extent that we can continue to raise vaccination rates, I think we're going to have to continue along this path of layered mitigation. And the evidence is pretty clear as we continue to gather more information and feedback from our public health professionals.
Thank you. Same question to April Boyd-Narona.
Yes. As a member of the Shawnee Mission School District community, I have a daughter that is a recent graduate this spring, Nia, and my son Caleb is a sophomore at Shawnee Mission West. So I support the mask mandate. I am a college professor, but I don't have expertise in the health field. And so I trust, as a parent, that health professionals know what they're talking about. That's what they are there for. So I'm not here to, you know, say that the data doesn't matter because it does, especially in this instance. As a matter of fact, the data is very clear in the fact that it is part that mitigating a measure such as mask-wearing and much of what Mary and Heather have already mentioned make a difference. So I support the board in their decision for the mask mandate for the school district. Kids need to be in the classroom. That is where they learn the best. And so I support all data that further supports that as well. We need a nonpartisan board that makes decisions, sticks to the decisions to help make sure that our kids remain in school and that they are safe. And that also extends not only just to the children, but to the teachers, support staff, and all those that engage with our students within the school district.
Thank you. For the next question, we'll start with Mary. Mary, many staff are experiencing burnout due to the current pandemic increasing stress and workloads. In what ways can the school board help staff succeed and be retained while also attracting new staff members?
I think this question is reflected pretty clearly in one of our five strategic plans, which is to create kind of that culture and support within the learning environment as well as providing opportunities for our teachers and our educators to excel. And so a number of steps have been put in place to try to address those concerns. And the burnout, I think, was building well before we even got hit with the global pandemic. If we look at all of the workload that was added on to teachers' plates following the Great Recession and under funding of public education, we lost a lot of our support staff. So a lot of the responsibilities fell to our educators. So this collective kind of incremental buildup of burnout is very real. Shawnee Mission, two years ago, began a strategy of how to restore our secondary teachers to pre-recession course load levels, so reducing teachers' course loads to five out of seven instead of six out of seven. This would reduce the number of students they were interacting with as well as increase the opportunity for additional collaboration and support on a broader scale and have that bandwidth to individualize instruction for our students and be more responsive. So that very carefully laid-out plan, I think our community was very well supportive of that, was tied to the tax increase bond that passed very intentionally using our capital outlay dollars differently and putting those protections of fiscal responsibility around that. So that would be a sustainable change in plan. So that was just one step in addressing the need. Another example is providing that $600 to retain for a retention commitment to our teachers and staff who stayed through and came back after the pandemic. Just two examples. I'm sure my colleagues here tonight can identify a few more. Thank you.
Heather Ausley, same question.
Thanks. This is actually a great question because I think employers everywhere are struggling with the workforce that has really had to bear the brunt of increased workload and the stress of the pandemic, especially for folks who have to be in-person. Our educators and our staff have been in the building since before there was a vaccine, working with kids who are doing their best to practice mask-wearing with fidelity, but also their littles. You know, and a lot of unknowns, a lot of scary things. And so I think that, you know, the joke I've heard is the resiliency pizza. There's no such thing as resiliency pizza. I mean, we can bring as many meals as we want to the teacher's lounge, but we need to have real support structures in place to make sure that they're going to get through this okay. One of the things that the district did after the infamous 2018 negotiation cycle in partnership with Shawnee Mission NEA was start interest-based bargaining. And interest-based bargaining is where the parties work together to find solutions to issues that they bring to the table. So both the NEA Shawnee Mission team and the administrative team from the district get together. And instead of saying, "This is our position, and this is our position, and let's negotiate till we get to the middle," it was, "This is the problem. What can we do collaboratively to address the problem?" And then the teams reach a conclusion and bring it to the board, and then the board is able to work to approve what the teams created as a solution at the bargaining table. Another thing that came out of that was that the teams are now meeting on a monthly basis as opposed to just during the negotiation cycle after the notice letters have gone out. So our administrative team and the NEA team are getting together and communicating even when we're not technically at the bargaining table, which is really important. So if there is a need or issue that's coming up, the administrative team can be made aware of it before it becomes too big of an issue. So I think interest-based bargaining and the monthly meetings have been really pivotal in making sure that we're finding out what's going on and what we can do to help.
Thank you. April Boyd-Narona, same question.
Yes, as a college professor, I am at the front lines of this day in and day out. My enrollments span from 25 up to 32, 35 students in the classroom every day, each week. So not that I'm saying that I'm experiencing burnout, but I innately understand what teachers are experiencing in the classrooms right now and even throughout this emerging COVID experiences that we're all experiencing. I applaud the current efforts, much like what Heather and Mary have stated already, of what the school district currently is doing. The interest-based bargaining is a great opportunity to collaborate and to further supplement the negotiations that will continue to occur, making sure that we have the support that is needed for the teachers in the classroom, for the support staff, because that funding is already there and provided. So continued due diligence will be a part of what teachers can experience, expect from the current school board. Collaborative efforts, continued interest or IBB processing, and to always have an opportunity to listen to the teachers and what they are experiencing within the classroom because I know all about it as a college professor.
Thank you. For the next question, we'll start with Heather Ausley. What is your assessment of the district's handling of diversity, equity, and inclusion at schools throughout the district? And what has been successful and what needs to be improved upon?
This is a great question, and it's actually something that I feel like we are beginning to work at well. One of the main things that stood out when we were doing the community-based strategic plan was that our community really felt like the diversity of our district is its strength. Our children get to interact with the people of the world when they graduate from our district. They are going to be able to go out into the workforce and be working with people that they saw at school. We began with cultural competency training for all of our staff, our educators, everyone who comes in contact with the student because we want to make sure that the employees of our district, from nutritional service workers up to top administrators, are culturally competent and know how to make sure all of our children feel welcome and safe and that when they walk into the building that they feel like they are at home and that that's where they're supposed to be. Another thing that has been put into place was an advisory committee for the superintendent on DE and I so that the superintendent can have an ear to the ground as to what issues in the community need to be addressed from their position. Another thing that was put into place was ally groups for students of various backgrounds, whether it be students of color or LGBTQ groups, so that students have a safe place to go to talk about what their experiences are. I think we have a long way to go. I don't think that we've mastered this. I don't think that we are, you know, like this bright shining example of what to do. I think what we can be proud of is that we have been very open about the fact that we have an area of opportunity here and that we want to close the achievement gap. We want our kids, all of our kids, to be successful and to be college and career-ready and to feel welcome and safe in school. And so we're going to continue to follow that strategic plan and put those things in place to make sure that they're successful.
Thank you. April Boyd-Narona, same question. Mute.
Yes, and could you repeat the question, please?
Sure. What is your assessment of the district's handling of diversity, equity, and inclusion? And what has been successful and what needs to be improved?
So I must applaud the current efforts of the Shawnee Mission School Board currently. I agree with Heather in the fact that there is always room for improvement. But that is where we can steer distinctly towards the diversity, equity, and inclusion components that are baked into the very framework of our strategic plan. We have a roadmap. We have a blueprint. We just need to follow it. But following it with the intention of also in further engagement with our parents, with stakeholders both in and outside of the classrooms and community. And we've already done that. We've gotten a great start with that, with our strategic plan. At the very core of diversity, equity, and inclusion is a sense of belonging and make sure that that involvement or that environment is further embraced within classrooms, that we are continuing to equip our teachers and educators and support staff to be, as Heather mentioned, closely competent to address the needs with every student within our district. So I support diversity, equity, and inclusion. I believe and I know that representation matters, and that needs to be seen, embraced, and further engaged throughout all levels, administration, staff, support, and to incorporate our families as well.
Mary Sinclair, same question.
Thank you. I would like to begin first by talking about the idea of belonging. So diversity, equity, inclusion, and belonging is a phrase that is being used more intentionally, I think, by the administrative leadership. And I really appreciate that expansion of the goals in which we're trying to achieve. This really is being driven about creating a sense of belonging and welcoming. And so in order for every student to achieve and be successful and engage and participate in those opportunities for career and college readiness, they need to feel like they belong and are valued. And so the work with diversity, equity, and inclusion is about, you know, in part creating that sense of belonging and creating a competency among our staff and our students to understand kind of the differences that every student and staff person brings to the table. So I like keeping this idea of belonging in the conversation. A number of steps. I guess I want to also create the link between, in 2018, leadership staff from across disciplinary areas of the district came together and completed, engaged in a needs assessment for the district and identified that greatest concern for our kids who aren't achieving in school and whether it's more predominantly kids who speak a second language, who experience poverty, who look different, who act differently. Those staff and part of the committee recognized that Shawnee Mission needs to figure out how to better address the needs of all students. And that's how we got to the Corwin Training and that deep equity training. So I appreciate the work we're doing. I really feel strongly about remaining committed to the district plan so we can take many of these initial steps to the next level.
Thank you. Next question, starting with April Boyd-Narona. One of the attributes of the district's portrait of a graduate is citizenship. As a board member, how will you model citizenship for the students of the district?
That is a great question. Citizenship, and I kind of have a different perspective of that with my involvement with the, as being a diversity, equity, and inclusion global advisor for the XR Safety Initiative. When I think of citizenship, I consider it from a global perspective. As we've mentioned kind of briefly tonight, that we are preparing our students for the next leg or the next stage of their career, of their life. And so it is innately important that we prepare them for a global perspective. With that, that could mean that they are competing currently against students around the world. And so when we talk about citizenship, it is citizenship almost as if they are an ambassador already, an ambassador for Shawnee Mission, an ambassador for our district, even at its core level as an ambassador for their family because that is what they're representing. In addition to that, they're representing their culture. They are representing their lived experiences and bringing that all to the table to better prepare them for whatever is the next leg or next stage of their life once they leave the Shawnee Mission School District.
Heather Ausley, same question.
So, you know, I have three kids currently in all three levels. I have a elementary kiddo, a middle school kiddo. And if she heard me call her a kiddo, my junior would be really upset with me. And one of the things that I tell people is I will never ask you to do anything that I myself am not willing to do. And my husband is also an elected official. He's a state representative. And both of us believe deeply that citizenship is more than just turning up at the polls to vote. That is the beginning of the bar. And unfortunately, we don't even have as many people voting as we need. I think the district does a great job engaging students and getting them registered to vote and teaching them what they need in their American history class and their social studies classes. But I also appreciate the leadership in our community amongst both leadership at the district level and amongst elected officials and through numerous, numerous advocacy groups in the Shawnee Mission School District. We have an engaged citizenry, a very engaged citizenry. And citizenship means you stand up and you speak out and you get out the vote and you lead by example. Even if it's tough, even if it's hard, there are things that are really important and worth doing. And you get up in the morning and you go and do them. If that means people are going to put up Aus to Ausley signs or yell at you at board meetings because you're making people mask because that's what's safe, you do it because it's the right thing to do. And so I really appreciate the leadership in our district and really just the leadership in our community because I think that Shining Mission um has exemplified what it means to tackle the hard things, to do what's right for your kids. Um, and and I I will continue to do that and I appreciate the people in our community who are supportive of us, who do that and who lead by example themselves.
Mary Sinclair.
I I think about modeling citizenship in in my personal life in three, three different ways. One is in terms of mentoring. So my life before um uh was with the research center focused on student engagement and dropout prevention and a big component of that intervention was met was a form of mentoring. So when I left Minnesota and came here, one of my former colleagues challenged me to walk the walk. She's like, hey, if you're going to be working in, if you're going to be around schools, you should be mentoring other kids. So I joined the um the MVP program in the district, which is uh the district's kind of volunteer um mentoring and tutoring program. So I've been um with the same student since she was in first grade and she's now in high school. And so doing mentoring to me is a form of of citizenship and volunteering in our schools program. So the MVP program is a great one for people to uh engage in. Um civic engagement, uh I would add on to uh what Heather uh talked about in terms of it's more than voting. It's it's all those things that go in between voting. And so I've been, I've supported um the school efforts to register seniors uh through Kansas PTA. I've served as a legislative liaison for Kansas PTA since my kids were in kindergarten for about sixteen years through and still remain with advocacy team with Kansas PTA. Advocating for uh legislative policy that supports our public education. Uh, the other piece is uh outside of my role of education, but stepping into kind of a typical role. So my family owns a fifth generation business and I am uh so it's a hundred about a hundred fifty years old. I'm only the second woman to ever serve on the board. And she and my my predecessor and I have also um served as chair of the board. So uh it's it's um it's interesting sitting in that chair when um, you know, a typical role anyways, so.
Thank you. Well, you've got you've got the next question first. Uh, so the Shining Mission School District had their YouTube channel uh shut down earlier this year. Uh YouTube, of course, has changed their policy. Uh, but what additional changes do you think should be made to school board public comment processes to ensure this doesn't happen in the future?
Do you want me to go first?
Yes, Mary.
Okay. Uh, so the the um the the public comment. So first I want to say that public comment is something that Shining Mission School District has always engaged in. It's not a requirement of any school district is it is an option. But that is something that Shining Mission has valued in creating one of many opportunities for community members to come and share their concerns and questions uh with the board. There are a variety of other opportunities for um our uh patrons to do that through um email, through uh through letters, through conversations, joining committees. So there are a number of ways to share concerns with the board. Uh, first of all, um the change to the public comment portion in live streaming with YouTube. Uh, the initial reason, one of the initial reasons for doing was that we did not want to jeopardize our other opportunities. Am I out of time? I'm sorry. Okay, the other opportunities to um share the work of the board on YouTube. So we have not changed the policy of live streaming our board meetings or other work of the board, and that was really the most important component to protect, to allow people in the broader community to um watch and engage um in those or watch those um conversations as we make our decisions. The the other precedence to consider from my perspective and policy around public comment and live streaming is to the extent to which that is um an equitable practice um to elevate the the public comment over other forms of communication. Not everyone can come to a board meeting. And so I think it's important to be able to um make sure that we're paying attention to all forms of communication across the across the different channels.
Heather Ausley. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, this is a very serious topic, I think, for boards across the country right now because government platforms through boards and commissions are being weaponized to spread disinformation that is responsible for the deaths of citizens. The issue with YouTube removing our public comments was because there was disinformation that violated their policy at that time. And that disinformation was was dangerous. Um, it's disinformation that is causing people to forego risk mitigation and putting themselves at risk of contagion of a deadly disease or a disease that could leave them with disability conditions for the rest of their life. Um, different boards have handled this differently and from my perspective, um, you know, we have an obligation to provide honest communication with our constituents and to make sure that we're providing them with the information that they need to make informed decisions. And by platforming disinformation, we were then responsible for the disinformation. So when YouTube removed the comments, um I too was concerned about losing the ability to live stream the business portion of our meetings. But I was also very concerned about the fact that people would be getting information from us that would be a threat to themselves or to their families and to our community. Um, so at this time, I feel like the opportunity to provide public comment at meetings is still there. The board is there to hear the public comment and to engage with the community, but we have um removed the risk of being responsible for spreading information that could result in the deaths of our neighbors and friends. And I feel like that's striking a balance for right now. Um, Mr. Stratton made a motion for us to revisit this when we revisit our handbook on an annual basis and that motion passed unanimously. So a year from now, we will probably engage in this conversation again when we review our handbook. Um, and a lot can happen in a year, but um, oh, I'm out of time. My apologies.
Thank you. April Boyd-Nerona, same question.
Yes, I I just want to remind the community that public comments have always been an integral part of school board meetings and as it should continue to be. Parents and families have a right to express their public opinions in a public forum and for it to be broadcasted live. Unfortunately, for the Shining Mission School District in particular, our district was flagged because it was deemed that misinformation was stated at a board meeting. That was YouTube's policies. We don't control that. And so we had to make a decision. So I do support the decision that the school board has made, but I also propose two alternatives. One, that we do earnestly search for another platform to continue doing what many school boards have done before and offer the alternative or public comments within the the uh school board. Also, we have the opportunity to be innovative and to practice collaborative efforts to see what other al- alternate options are available. We are in the age of one of the greatest ages of emerging technology. So that is where I stand. I do support public comments. I know that it's been, it has been an integral part of school board meetings since inception, probably. And so that does need to continue to be a component and offer that as a right for all citizens, parents and families to express their opinions in live real time. Thank you.
Thank you. April, we'll stay with you for this next question. Um, do you feel the school di- school district has an issue with transparency and why or why not?
I do not feel that the in that the uh school district has an issue or a problem with transparency. Um, as I meet and have met with a few current board members, just to get a better understanding of what uh my role may possibly be if I do win my seat. Um, transparency, uh it 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 has a a particular pet place and with how we communicate with the community. There are just some things that will not be privy to all that are concerned. But for the most part, from what I can tell as a member, proud member of the Shining Mission School District community, that the school board does take the time to explain. As we can see, we just discussed that they earnestly take under consideration the right for parents and and families to speak publicly about their opinions on what the school board does and their members um representing them. So when we talk about that particular issue, um I I believe the transparency is there. I believe that there are levels of transparency, but I do applaud the efforts of our current school board in making sure that they attempt to be as transparent as possible, whether that's um uh publicly showing through the board, through the board meetings, what they discuss um and speaking to their constituents um through the various opportunities that are currently available through the emails, through postings, and even being here tonight on this panel shows a certain level of transparency as well for each of us tonight.
Thank you. Mary Sinclair, same question.
I agree that Shining Mission makes a very concerted effort in the school board to uh be transparent. There are a number of um communication uh channels and mechanisms that are in place to continue to convey the work of the board, the work of the district uh and the decisions and directions in which we're going and to be inclusive um to the extent possible with community stakeholders to develop those decisions. Uh, one example, and and the district is very open to continuing to strengthen our our capacity to share information and to be transparent. Uh, one example, following the um vast degree of miscommunication around negotiations in two thousand eighteen to two thousand nineteen was establishing the Finance and Facilities Committee, and I sit on that with uh Mr. Stratton. And that committee was um, you know, the the task of that committee is to examine on an ongoing basis the budget, the finance and the facilities and how those dollars are being used in relation to the strategic plan and the goals of the committee, uh the goals of the district. And every board member identified a um representative to sit on that committee from across the district. So we have patrons who are um engaged and, you know, beholden to no one but them, you know, themselves and their voice and their neighbors and um and their and that conversation, there is opportunity to ask questions of district administrators and to really dig in. So that's one um very substantive committed commitment to promoting not only transparency, but furthering understanding um about the budget and how we how those dollars are aligned and prioritized towards the the goals of our district.
Heather Ausley, same question.
So I appreciate Mary's contribution and I'm going to build on it. Um, in addition to the Finance and Facilities Committee, there was a subcommittee created for the introduction of policy by board members. Prior to the creation of this subcommittee, there wasn't really a track for board members to submit policy and it was um it was somewhat of a a opaque process for the community to even to watch or participate in or to understand how it worked. Um, because I think that one of the issues that came up during the two thousand seventeen campaign was that our community wanted to be more engaged. They wanted things to be more transparent so they could follow along and see how things were were working and how decisions were made. As part of that process, um our communications team, we got a new communications director. We started the Ask the District email process. We went from one board meeting a month to two board meetings a month with the first board meeting being a board workshop. So whatever the big ideas are, whatever the um strategic plan items that are being reviewed, whatever the program reviews that are going to be done, that's happening in a workshop so that the community can pay attention and see what's happening and then communicate with their board members in the two-week window between the workshop and the board meeting where we'll be voting on the issues that would be then presented to us. And so that's allowed us to engage with the community so that they can say, hey, we we know what's coming up at the next meeting. It was referenced in the board workshop, so we have this information and we can, we can speak to our board members about it. We also started the board recap email that comes out after board meetings that goes over everything that was discussed during the board meeting, highlighting both the superintendent report and the action items that are passed. Um, and we've continued to engage with constituent outreach with our thought exchange process so that people can tune in to that. I think that there are some frustrations with some things with regards to transparency, but in certain instances, transparency is not conducive either to student privacy rights, to educators' privacy rights, as employers, we we need to keep certain things confidential with regards to personnel. So, and now I'm out of time.
Uh, the next question is for you, though. Um, what are your views on discipline practices across the district?
Um, this is something that we recently addressed, I believe it was roughly eight months ago. I could be wrong, though. Mary will have to help me out. I don't remember the exact date, but we updated our student handbook and made a more uniform disciplined procedure for students um and and made sure that people were more aware of what that was so that we could have a more uniform process and recording in our um I'm trying to think of what, it's not, is it Skyward where we record the discipline infractions? So before the student handbook was updated, and this is the first time we had updated it, I believe, as a board in five years, um you know, what got recorded in Skyward might be um different based off of who was doing the recording or what the infraction was. And so there wasn't a lot of uniformity. And so when you don't have that sort of uniformity and the thi- things spelled out in the handbook, margin of error for an individual can come into the equation, um unconscious bias can come into the equation. And so we wanted to make sure we were providing a system that eliminated that as much as possible. So that has been updated and the gathering of data with that, we're we're going to be tracking that data and getting annual reports on it to see if we're on track to make sure that um we don't have a discipline gap. Uh, we want to close the discipline gap, just like we want to close the achievement gap. So that is an area of opportunity for improvement. We've taken the first steps to make sure that we're, we've got a good foundation and a system that has a chance at success. And then the next portion is tracking the data and watching it to make sure we're doing what we can to close the discipline gap. And when I reference the discipline gap, I'm I'm miss- making the assumption that people know what that is, but it's um it's where you have students who are um in protected classes or who are disadvantaged, are facing higher rates of discipline um and and suffering as a result of higher rates of discipline that could have potentially been caused by unconscious bias. So we want to eliminate that that gap.
Thank you. Mary Sinclair, same question.
So the discipline code um hand, I don't, the disci- anyways, the discipline code went through a very rigorous review. And I believe it was approved last school year, but it did not get into the hands, but then we didn't have students in the building. So there was a a very intensive review process in part to get consistency across definition and use from building to building. Um, but uh more importantly, there was a very concerted effort to bring in a framework of of um uh restorative justice and and positive disciplinary, positive disciplinary practices. So we're, the emphasis is on the learning opportunities and not on the discipline to the extent possible. So there was a refinement of the number of codes being used, clarification of definition and an alignment of um uh of of consequences that were in keeping with positive behavioral supports. Um, another piece that was, uh and so implementation of that really has just gotten started this year uh of that new handbook, getting into the hands of all of our principals with students in the building with an opportunity to implement that. Uh, adding to what Heather was talking about, um uh an important um measurement of effectiveness will be the degree to which that uh discipline um is applied proportionately so that we don't have students um of uh disproportionately being identified for behavior challenges or other kinds of of consequences. So that will be a marker that's going to be very important for diversity, equity and inclusion and belonging um goals. Uh, the um there the, I believe in just the last board meeting, the most recent board meeting, there is a presentation of the um the way the discipline code, some uh recent conceptual framework and how that fits into the broader goals of the district.
Thank you. April Boyd-Nerona, same question.
Yes, it is uh the both ladies just mentioned, the disciplinary practices are an ongoing process and as it should be. So I do apply the current efforts uh of it, the and as it should be. So I do apply the current efforts of the handbook being updated and that it is in the forefront of what administrators and school board members are consciously being aware of. Awareness of this process by the community members is critical as well. We just talked about transparency. So starting with the awareness for community members is critical. But as I mentioned before, that it is an ongoing process. So some of the things that we can to best leverage the work that has already begun is to make sure that the community stakeholders are involved as much as possible. Heather spoke previously about board workshops where, once again, that transparency is there. And then as Mary added, that it has been brought up and addressed in board meetings as well. So awareness is a critical factor, making sure that there is ongoing engagement in reference to the discipline practices, in addition to making sure that there is an authentic voice or voices from community stakeholders, from parents, even students and administrators and teachers.
Thank you. And we'll move on to what I think is our last question of the evening. And we'll start with Mary Sinclair. Describe your vision of equitable and inclusive practices for students with disabilities.
So the idea of continuum of services is a critical concept when we think about educating students with disabilities and allowing opportunities for students to be in a setting that is least restrictive, whether it be in the regular classroom, in the building, in a resource room. So making sure that we have the resources to provide that continuum of services for students with disabilities is critical. We have spent the last several years looking at our resources and staffing for special education. We've brought back in a phenomenal special education director. We've added 12 positions to our secondary level for special education services. So we have staffing and support to better meet those needs of students. In going back to kind of your broader question of what does that look like for students with disabilities, I would like to say it's the same for all of our students, creating those opportunities for students to engage in college and career readiness activities like any other, like any other student in the building. So as we create opportunities, say, for client-based projects or for taking, you know, dual college credit, that we make sure we have those supports in place for our students with learning disabilities or whatever disability they might have, to be able to take advantage of those opportunities as well.
Thank you. Heather Asley, same question.
So I think that this is something that is very similar to what we were talking about with DE and I, just as a general thought process in that we want every student to be able to succeed. We want every student to be welcomed when they walk in the door. And for our students with disabilities, that looks like creating a safe environment. It looks like having the support services in place that allows them to thrive. For example, with regards to risk mitigation, mask wearing allows our students who are at risk of additional complications with regards to COVID to participate in the learning environment in person in a safer way. I think if you are in a district that doesn't have mask wearing, I know we can see these lawsuits happening across the country where families with students with underlying health conditions are bringing lawsuits saying that this is not meeting faith. These students are not being able to participate in the classroom because they face greater risk from the contraction of COVID. And so that's one of those things where it's like, you know, you create an environment as a community to make sure that students feel welcome and engaged when they walk in the door. From having enough pairs to meet their needs to having a special education leadership team that is doing what they need to do to implement training or meet 504 or IEP plans, that building leadership teams understand that we not only have a legal obligation to do these things, but we have a moral obligation to do so. And I think you can see that in some of the things that we have chosen to prioritize in our budget for the last few years, from hiring people to build that program back up, because it did face a significant amount of cuts over the years when we were under the disastrous tax experiment, to our advocacy at both the state and national level. We need additional special education funding. When the state and the federal government don't meet their statutory obligations, then we make those funding decisions come out of our operational budget. So if we could get the funding that we are entitled to as a matter of law, that would be super useful as a district. And I'm out of time. I could talk on this a lot longer. I feel like it's unfair that you're cutting me off.
Thank you. You've all been really great with time. I really do appreciate that. April Boyd-Nerona, your turn.
Yes, this brings me back to the years when I was a para in classrooms from K through six, where I was a para with English language learners. And one thing that was a survival mechanism for me as an educator in the classroom, as a para in the classroom, was to be innovative with the ways and formats that I built customized curriculums for the students. It should be an equitable, accessible for all students with a disability, whether they're differently disabled or what have you. And whether that access is from traditional means or through modern technology. So we must equip the teachers and the staff with the adequate resources to do that. They are there in the classroom on the front lines. We just need to make sure that they are equipped to adequately do that. So we also need to actively keep and prepare the parents and caregivers along the way as well. Awareness, even here, is a critical factor to making sure that accessible learning for all students is available. So accessibility for equality education should be a core requirement and benefit for all students within the Shining Mission School District.
Thank you. So now we'll allow each of you to make a quick closing statement of, I believe it's one minute. And we will start with, let's start with Mary Sinclair.
I would like to close with the thought of the district's recent refresh of our portrait of a graduate. So as part of the initial work of the strategic plan, committee of students, parents, educators, counselors, business industry leaders came together, reviewed and confirmed that the goal and the portrait of this graduate is to be not only college and career ready, which are really key components, but also to graduate with that sense of citizenship as well as those soft skills to be successful. And this portrait was, you know, I think confirmed by a recent round of conversations led by the Kansas Department of Education, who went on a 50-city tour across the state. Students need to know those core academic skills and competence. They have to have those, graduate those core academic competencies, but also have those soft skills, interpersonal skills to be successful. And so when we think about this holistic approach for our students, our strategic plan is really geared towards creating these opportunities for all kids to achieve these goals. And so my desire to run for reelection, am I over, is really to help the district stay the course. Thank you. I could have this conversation for hours.
You're welcome. April Boyd-Nerona, your closing statement, one minute.
Okay, yes, yes. Thank you for inviting us all to be at this panel tonight. I passionately believe in a quality public education for all students. As a college professor, as the daughter of two retired educators, I believe that public education is at the very core of what we need to do in the Shining Mission School District. I hope to win your vote tonight as to be a member of the Shining Mission School District School Board. I am a proud parent. I have two children in, I have one child still in the district. My oldest daughter has graduated, but my son is still in the school district. So I look forward to helping to champion that diversity is a strength of the Shining Mission School District as a school board member.
Thank you. Heather Asley, your closing statement.
So I just want to take an opportunity to really express my gratitude and appreciation for our community. Throughout the course of this last year and a half, we have faced some really tough hurdles together. And I am extraordinarily proud of our students and our families and our neighborhoods for how they have come together to bring about wonderful things for our district, even though we're in the middle of a plague. I think you can see that in the bond approval by voters at 70%. Our community approved a tax increase bond to reduce secondary educator workload, to make improvements to our buildings. And I don't know if there is another district in the country where the board president can go out and say, I understand that we are in the middle of a pandemic, but we need more money and have the community step up and say, yeah, we're going to do that for our kids. When our community showed up, when we were debating the mascot at Shining Mission North, we heard from our students and they overwhelmingly supported updating that mascot. And I was so proud of our kids for being that inclusive and for saying it's time for us to make a positive change. So I'm out of time, but I'm proud of you, SMST. Well done.
All right. Thank you all for your time. Thank you for attending. Thank you for being prompt with your answers and keeping us on track tonight. And with that, I'll hand it back over to Michael for some closing comments from mainstream.
Thank you, David, for moderating this evening, for keeping the conversation moving forward. And of course, to the candidates for taking the time to share their perspectives with us this evening. I'd also like to give another round of thanks to our partner organizations who made this forum possible. League of Women Voters of Johnson County, Mainstream Coalition, Advocacy and Awareness Group of Johnson County, Climate Action KC, Mid-America LGBT Chamber and the Northeast Johnson County Chamber. The League and Mainstream will be posting recordings of this forum on Facebook and YouTube. So please get out there, take another look at them and share them with your network of voters. And remember, October 12th is the last day to register to vote for the general election. Early voting begins on October 13th and Election Day is on November 2nd. Before you vote, please visit vote411.org and ksballet.org to read up on all the candidates on your ballot, find your polling location and make a plan to vote. Thank you again for joining us. Remember to vote and get others to vote on or before November 3rd. November 2nd, before November 2nd.